Okay, just let me know when we're recording over there, please. Folks will take their seats, we're gonna get started just in a second here. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item of the evening is the discussion of police building bond premium. The city's financial advisor, underwriter, and bond attorney are present to provide the history process and transaction of our general obligation bond for the Inglewood Police Headquarters Building and give some context and understanding to the council on the bond sales and the premium issue. I'd like to turn it over before we turn it over to our guests. Welcome, thank you for being here tonight, to City Manager Keck for some initial comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, we wanted to bring this forward tonight. There's been discussion, over time, about premium, what it is, what it is not, how it may be utilized, and one of the things that we're searching for, I believe, this evening, at the end of, after you've heard the dialogue tonight from our professional consultants on the outside, is to gain some consensus to move forward in the future, as projects may manifest themselves, that could potentially eliminate the need for going to the fund balance or the general fund reserves to take care of public safety projects. And we have several examples of those types of projects that could be eliminated and dealt with now with this bond premium that we received, again, because of our financial position, as well as the market's appetite for our particular paper. And so, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kathleen Rinkle, who will introduce the team that she has with us this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So, tonight, we have, to my right, Nick Jones, he's with PFM, he's our financial advisor, working with our firm. And then we have Josh Benninghoff, who's with Stifel Nicolaus, he's our underwriter. And then, a little bit further down the table, we have Tom Pelz, he's our bond attorney with Cootac Rock. So, I'll turn it over to Nick here, who's gonna walk through the presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So, we'll just flip through the presentation here, I think some of you may have copies of it there, too. Sort of just an overview of bond terminology, and then we'll get more specific as to the Inglewood situation here. So, general obligation bonds are backed by the full faith and credit of the city, so there's an obligation to levy taxes in an amount sufficient to pay the annual debt service on the bonds. Voters have to approve the ballot measure that allows for this levy, and that was approved in November of 2016. It's set a maximum levy and a maximum principal amount. The city then moved forward and issued the general obligation bonds within these parameters, and you can see these are summarized below. So, the voters approved up to $27 million in principal, $2.2 million in annual debt service, so annual tax payments, and total debt service not to exceed $47.9 million. You can see the city bond ordinance additionally imposed restrictions of a maximum borrowing rate of 5% and a final maturity of 2037, so 20 years. The results are shown on the right for the final bond sale. So, the par amount was at the maximum of 27 million. The annual debt service was 2.195, so below the limit of 2.2. And the total debt service will be 42.8 million, so, you know, below the estimate of 47.9. Additionally, the borrowing rate was 2.85%. You've probably all heard how, you know, rates are very, very low, and so, we thought that was a great result, and obviously far below the maximum borrowing rate. And the final maturity was 2036, so one year shorter than the maximum. The next slide shows the ballot language that was presented to voters, laying out the provisions that were summarized in the previous slide. And we'd also like to highlight here, on the bottom, as, you know, we focus this discussion more in on premium, that the language notes that the ballot is for authorizing funds to be used for safety service needs, with or without bond premium, so the premium, you know, just is allowed to be put into that same project fund for the safety service needs. And then it authorizes the repayment to pay principal, premium, and interest on the debt. So, that's, it's all included in the ballot language there. Kind of stepping, maybe, or zooming in a little on sort of just bonds and breaking that down. So, it's a debt instrument in which an investor loans money, in this case, to the city, and you borrow the funds for a defined period of time. So, as we showed on a couple of slides back, final maturity is 2036, at a specific rate, which was, the blended rate was 2.85%. We'll dive into sort of each maturity of those later. They're used to finance a variety of projects, in this case, you know, police projects, social safety services. And they're also referred to as fixed income securities, because they pay a fixed coupon rate. And that'll become important as we talk about how premium is calculated later. So, the city, the issuer, has issued the bonds, and they'll state this interest rate, so this regular payment that the bondholder will receive for the loaned funds, the principal and return on the maturity date. The interest is paid every six months, and, you know, there's various categories of bonds. In this case, we're talking about municipal bonds, so tax-exempt bonds. General terminology here, the principal is the amount of the bond issued, that 27 million, which will end up being paid back. The maturity date, in this case, is 2036, that's the final maturity date. And then, in this example, we just have one bond, but we'll talk later about how you can, you know, we've serialized them, so there's one maturing each year. The coupon rate is the interest rate payment that the bondholder receives semi-annually, and that is different from the yields. And those sort of come together to determine the price of the bond. So, that's the key to understanding and talking about this premium concept, is that you've basically promised to pay a bondholder, say, a 5% interest rate, but because yields in the market are very low, you know, the blended yield is 2.85, they're willing to pay more money upfront for that ability to get the 5% coupon return rate, and, but you only have to pay them back the 27 million. So, you've received more money than you're paying back, and so that's kind of where the premium comes in.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. So, the coupon rate is the rate that you're paying out on that $27 million. Say it's 5%, that's a typical coupon rate, but because interest rates in the market are very low, investors are actually willing to pay you more than $27 million upfront for that cash flow. The cash flow is $27 million at a 5% coupon rate, but they were willing to pay you, you know, we'll show later, it's over $32 million for that. And that determines the yield. So, the more they pay for that cash flow, the lower their yield is. So, the yield was 2.85. So, that's kind of the trade-off there. And they're, they sort of, they're all related. So, as the coupon rate goes up, you know, the price will go up, as the price goes up, the yield goes down, so they're, you know, sort of related there. So, the next slide, we'll, we're sort of breaking this down into multiple maturities, making it a little more complicated. So, each of, each year, there's, maybe I'll just flashback. So, that yellow bar, the principal, that's just illustrating the repayment of one bond. The blue is the annuity of interest, so you're paying interest every year. On this next slide, you can see there's one bond maturing every year, and you're paying a separate interest rate on each bond, and they've been structured such that all those payments combined result in level debt service every year, of about $2.2 million a year. The coupon rate, which is the rate that the investors receive, is in that second column, the rate column, and the yield on the right illustrates that they've actually paid so much for that bond that the yield is much lower than the coupon rate. So, you can see for the first maturity in 2017, the yield is .78, whereas the rate is 3%. So, they're receiving a 3% interest rate, but they've paid so much for that cash flow upfront that the yields, when you sort of compute, like, okay, how much did I pay for this, how much am I getting back, they're only getting a yield of .78%. And you can see on the right, the borrowing rate, sort of the blended borrowing rate, the all-in TIC, is on the bottom right, that's 2.85%. So, that's sort of the average rate for all the bonds together. Yeah. Let me know if you have questions on this one, 'cause we'll get...
I actually do, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
You know, I think originally, when we got this substantial premium, you know, some of the rationale provided to the council and to the public was that there was a substantial shift in the market and that, you know, that created that demand. But, you know, as I look at the spread between the coupon rate and the yield, you know, it seems really wide, and the yield curve is pretty straight line, right? I mean, as maturity dates go further out, the yield increases. And I see that our, you know, coupon rates don't follow that same curve, and so I just wonder if we mispriced these bonds, and I'm wondering if anybody can speak to that.
Yeah, I think, so there's, there's kind of two things working when the bonds are priced. One is that investors demand a certain coupon rate. It's often 5%. You can see most of these rates are 5%, some are five and a quarter. What ends up happening is you sort of pick the coupon rate that investors have most appetite for, and that ends up getting you the lowest possible yield. So, the coupon rate is sort of, it's what the investor sees when, you know, they get their check in the mail every six months, but it's not the yield that you're actually paying effectively. And you can see that the yields, on the far end, they sort of do flatten out, but in the short term, there's a pretty steep increase there. And we've sort of just followed the yield curve in the market. So, I would say, I mean, I can, you know, also, Stifel can speak to, on the day of pricing, you know, they're talking with investors and making sure that the lowest yield is achieved, so...
But I think what I'm hearing you saying is that the market really demands a premium coupon rate, that that's somehow more attractive to the market, rather than a coupon rate that was substantially lower, that might have gotten us closer to our par value. But you're saying that we wanted a higher coupon rate because we knew that the market would value that coupon rate at a higher premium than a lower coupon rate.
Yeah, from, from the investor's perspective, I've been doing this 16 years, and the 5% coupon has been kind of the coupon de jour, de annum, if I'm using my Latin there correctly. It's kind of always been a 5% coupon market, so even when that yield column was 5% or even higher, investors still demanded a 5% coupon, almost out of market custom, so...
Basically knew then that there was gonna be a premium, knowing that the coupon rate that is kind of the standard, if you will, of 5% was substantially higher yield than the market was demanding.
So, that changes often. There are markets in which 5% coupons are demanded by the market. There are also markets where lower coupons, 4%s and 3%s are more in demand, and that can shift fairly quickly. The yield column, since basically this time last year, has shifted dramatically northward during the end of 2016, and then recovered during the balance of the first half of 2017, and has kind of trickled back up afterwards. From the city's perspective, one of the things that was debated was if you do, if the city chose to select a non-market standard coupon, something other than, at the time of sale, 5% coupon, the yield column would have changed as well. So, at the time, the way of getting the lowest possible interest rate was to appeal to the broadest potential pool of investors, which, at the time of this sale, was for 5% coupons. Deviating from that would have, would have reduced the amount of premium. You could have been closer to overall par, but at higher interest rates.
Understood. And so, was that recommendation then made by you guys, as far as how to price these to market, or was that ultimately an administrative call from our city staff?
I, I would say our role as underwriter is to evaluate market options, inform the city and its financial advisor of the options at the time of sale. Our belief was that this, collective belief, was that this was, this allowed the city to achieve the lowest possible borrowing rate, not necessarily focused primarily on premium or coupon, but how to achieve the lowest possible borrowing rate.
Thank you. Councilmember Maritain.
The issues come up about the premium, and it was never an issue of whether we would be paying back more than 27 million. That would be foolish, because that's what the bond was for. The issue was that paying the premium is the interest that we're paying on that, and that that premium was paid upfront. It says in the bond that you pointed out and highlighted here, that in each year to pay the principal of, and premium, who pays the premium? Don't we pay the premium in the interest rate that we're getting? So, we pay the premium back. So, it was never an issue, I mean, there might have been some misunderstanding from Councilmember Jill, that anybody ever made the inference that we were paying back more than the 27 million. We borrowed 27 million, but the premium, then, is us paying a higher interest rate. That's where we garnered the other $5 million, and that money has to be paid back. All of that money will be paid back. So, the $5 million that we garnered isn't free money, we have to pay it back. So, it does become part of the cost of the entire situation, and it wasn't some gift because we're awesome people, or cool, or anything. It was, it's a payment we have to pay back. We just get that piece earlier. So, if there was any misunderstanding, or that anybody ever thought that, I believe that we were, had actually borrowed more than the 27 million, but I think I'm pretty clear on that the other $5 million, $5.8 million was garnered, because we pay a higher interest rate. And so, just getting that money upfront doesn't mean that it isn't a cost to us, and that becomes very significant, in that this is money this community has to pay back, because we got these bonds at a higher interest rate. So, I just want to make that very clear, so that we're all understanding, no, no free money, no gift here, it was part of it. And it's pretty clear in the bond that it was, a vehicle was made for that, but it still is a cost to the city and has to be considered as part of this whole issue here. Does that clear that?
And real quick, though, I do think, you know, what you're describing as interest rate is probably, more accurately described, as the borrowing rate. And I think the coupon rate that you're describing is exactly right. We are paying 5% interest, and that's why the market gave us more than 27 million.
Right.
But ultimately, you know...
We gotta pay it all back.
And, and what they're saying, of course, is that, you know, when you look at the interest rate of the 32 versus the 27, our interest, overall interest rate is lower.
That's correct. Well, yeah, not as good as what we were told originally.
It is, whether you want the premium or not, I think, is the question, but ultimately, the interest rate is lower.
Actually, we were looking at a 3.6% interest rate initially, and the market gave us 2.85, so we did do better than what we initially anticipated.
Through the premium. And so, the...
Well, my concern, and I think what you guys have answered, is we end up paying back the $32 million. We're gonna end up paying that money back. Right. Then, okay.
Thank you. Other questions or concerns at this point? Go ahead, Mayor Maritain.
Yeah, I, it's never unclear that we would have to pay it back, obviously. What the, what the issue was, is that because of these bonds, because of our standing with these bonds, we, we did receive a premium, and that we could use that premium for what 's set on the bond for paying the premium as well. Does, does our annual payment change with the premium? Or, 'cause it, you said, on here, you have that 2.2, let me go back there where that was. The repayment amount, Joe Bonds, the actual 2.195, that's what we pay.
So, that's, that includes the repayment. Includes the repayment.
So, the voters approved that amount, because it came, and we got a premium with it. So, the voters aren't paying more than they expected. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue. Thank you for that explanation.
Are you clear, Ms. Benning?
Thank you for...
Give the floor back to our guests here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now, that's a helpful discussion, truly. So, yeah, moving to, and this will, you know, maybe talking about mechanics, you already understand, or we've just discussed, but the price is essentially, they boil it down, so it's as a percentage of the face value. So, if a bond is priced at 101, it's worth 101% of the face value, so that's essentially getting a 1% premium. So, you know, investors would pay you $101, you would pay them the interest rate in the meantime, then you would pay them back $100. So, you get a $1 premium upfront. Similarly, and this, you know, as Josh alluded to, if you, if we were in a market where interest rates are above 5%, where the borrowing rate was above 5%, but we still had the coupons at 5, you can actually get bonds priced at a discount. So, you only receive $95, you pay the interest rate, and then you have to give back 100. So, that's sort of the opposite side of that coin. So, the types of bonds are outlined below. Par bonds is the first one, and I think that there's sometimes, you know, a thought that that would be, okay, easiest if we could just have par bonds, so we have no premium or discount. You would have to then set the coupon rate equal to the yield. Investors aren't too keen on that. They like to get, you know, a more round yield, 5% is, as we said, mostly demanded. For discount bonds, the coupon rate is less than the yield. That's often more common when borrowing rates, when yields are higher in the market. And premium bonds is what is very, very common today. Given how low, how low yields are, the coupon rate is gonna be greater than the yield, and so you end up getting more money upfront. So, the investor pays more than the stated price, they give you a little premium. The mechanics that we sort of alluded to earlier of, you know, how, when the bonds are priced, did the market conditions shift? The bonds are priced on June 7th and closed on June 20th, and up until June 7th, we sort of, you know, Stifel and their underwriting desk are talking to investors and trying to get a feel for what the demand is and what the yields will be like, and we're making predictions there, but we don't know exactly what the yields are gonna be until the day of sale. So, then the bonds, so that's on June 7th, and the bonds are then received in electronic form at the closing on June 20th, at those agreed-upon prices, at those agreed-upon yields. And then, Stifel is sort of the intermediary there, and will receive, or essentially, I guess, the city will receive the bond proceeds on the closing date. And you can see sort of Stifel in the middle, between the city and the bondholders there. So, it's a dynamic process, you know, there's a pre-pricing, then there's a pricing, and there's sort of these expectations of where you'll price, and then the prices and the yields are sort of moving around, and, you know, maybe there's crazy news comes out of North Korea or something, and that causes the market to shift, and so you never really know exactly. You know, you have an idea, but you don't know exactly what the yields will be until the day of sale. And, yeah, on June 20th, you can see that money was transferred for the project fund. So, that will be talked about on the next slide here, the sources and uses. So, on the day of closing, the bondholders paid the premium and the principal amount. As you can see, the 27 million and the 5.8 million premium delivered to Stifel. Stifel released the total proceeds, less their underwriter's discount fee, to the city, and the city then, you know, can use those funds for projects, and also to cover the cost of issuance for the various consultants. This then flows into the annual debt service, so the $27 million is sort of allocated in such a way that when interest and principal are repaid, you get a level total debt service for each year, just below that $2.2 million authorized amount. And then, there's a, there's also, what's common is a 10-year call option. So, if you, you know, in 10 years, interest rates go down, you can borrow money and pay these bonds off, and that's very common. I think about 80% of bonds, 80% of callable bonds get called, so it's very common, and investors are used to that, and that's kind of the market standard. So, this slide deals specifically with premium, and we've talked about these, these concepts before, but it is very conventional and common in today's market, given how low yields are, and that there's still an appetite for, you know, 4% or 5% coupons, which are gonna be higher than the yields. And investors are willing to pay a higher upfront dollar price. You know, we talked about that, you know, 101, 102 upfront in exchange for this, this coupon rate that they want to receive. So, you know, some investors, they call them fixed income securities, because some investors want to live off those coupon payments. So, they want to get a 5% return, and they can sort of choose that, use that as their annual income. So, they're willing to pay a little more upfront to make sure that they're getting a fixed income over the life of the bond. There's a pricing penalty associated with limiting issuances to par bonds. So, as we mentioned earlier, investors aren't too keen on having a bond that has a coupon of 2.85%. And if you make them, if you say, "Well, we're not gonna change the coupon for you," they'll demand a higher yield. So, as we were talking about earlier, it's always our intention to get the lowest possible borrowing cost, and part of doing that is giving investors sort of the coupon rate that they want. And then they will be willing to pay up more for it and get a lower borrowing cost for the city.
Got some questions from council, maybe, on that issue. Councilmember Maritain?
So, while these sold out rather quickly, I mean, and I realize that the investor may want that, if we had held out a little bit more, would have, they would have still sold. I mean, with the tax-exempt value on them and everything, I mean, they sold out overnight. So, had we, it is possible we could have held out, and maybe they would have sold in a couple of days, but we would have been able to do it and still garner a lower interest rate, which wouldn't be putting us in debt for the 32. We could have, couldn't we have just held out a little bit and stayed with the lower interest rate? I mean, I'm trying to put this in connection with some urban renewal classes that I just attended, and I know that we had a little breakout session, and people down in Pueblo were talking about getting some of their bonds at, at a much lower than what we ended up doing. So, had we just spent a little bit more, was it more important that we got the extra 5.8 million and paid a higher interest rate and incurred a bigger debt? Or maybe we could have just waited the couple of, a little bit longer and had the lower interest rate?
Sure. The, the order period for your financing took place over a single day, and that's...
That's what I heard.
That's market convention for the entirety of our market with limited exceptions. The decision to, for what was offered to the market, the coupon that's offered, is decided, as Nick said, in the, in the pre-pricing process, and there's opportunities throughout the process to change that in a repricing, but essentially what we do is electronically put out a distribution that says, "This is what we're offering. These coupons, these yields, let us know if you're interested." Investors then have an opportunity electronically to submit their orders on a maturity-by-maturity basis for the maturities they're interested in. And then for the maturities that are, add another word to the vocabulary, oversubscribed, meaning we have orders in excess of those maturities, the city, and as underwriter, Stifel has the opportunity to say, "Okay, we have too many orders here, let's change the price to the city's benefit, raise the price to try to get fewer investors to participate." So, the city gets a better result, you get a higher dollar price for that same coupon, more premium.
But a higher interest rate, too.
A higher, a lower interest rate with the same coupon.
Right.
So, you...
Well, we could have made the decision prior during that entire process not to do that piece, not get that additional money out of this that we have to pay back, too. We could have done that. Okay.
At that point, you could have made the decision to pursue, as Nick said, a par structure. The resulting interest rate would have been higher, but the proceeds received at closing would have been lower. So, you could have essentially borrowed less.
And the interest would have been lower.
The interest repaid would have been lower, if the interest rate would have been higher.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Does that make sense?
All right. So, at what point does that decision get made, prior to it going up for sale, at the part where you're offering, prior to it going on the market for real?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. So, and this is, you know...
I was interested in asking a question.
Oh, thank you. Councilman Rolson, please.
It's several slides back, actually, but I think it's a quicky, no, I think it's a quick and easy. And maybe it's really to Eric or Kathleen, about when and how do we watch these over time, so that if the rate drops, you said 80% pay back early. What's our process for keeping track of that and making sure that we can benefit from that?
Actually, Stifel Nicolaus will help us with that.
Okay.
And they keep an eye on the market interest rates, and if they drop lower than what we're paying now, then they will recommend a repayment.
80% is pretty high. I did not know that. That's really great. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so to expand on that a little bit, because the coupon rate is often around 5%, and you can see that, let me go back a few slides, you can see that the yields in the early years are much lower. Once you, you know, you get 10 years in the future, you're talking about refinancing what was an 11-year bond with a one-year bond. And so, you kind of march 10 years down that yield curve, and you just get a much lower rate. So, yeah, it's, it's often, I mean, yeah, it's very, very common to have a call option, and investors are basically expecting that you will call them, so...
Good. Just wanna make sure we keep track of it.
Yeah. Okay. So, we... So we talked about premium, and I'll just say also, you know, it's very common, it's seen in almost every Colorado financing. We'll show a few examples of comparable sales later. I mean, it's also seen, you know, all over the country. It's just because of how low yields are, it's very, very common. And the most common use of premium, you know, folks also do, you know, similar ballot measures. They authorize a certain principal amount, they get a certain amount of premium, which they're not sure how much it's going to be until the pricing date, and then they often use it for additional projects. Or if there's, you know, cost overruns, it can be sort of a buffer there. So it's a common issue. So, yeah, we'll just highlight some Colorado general obligation bond transactions. You can see that all of them have premium, and many utilize the premium for projects. If you compare the par amount column to the project proceeds column, you can see that the proceeds column is almost always higher than the par amount. So, you know, you'll say on the ballot measure, we're going to issue up to, let's say, you know, 20, 88 million. You can see your sale is highlighted here, 27 million, and you often issue that par amount, not knowing how much premium you're going to get, and then you use the premium to put in the project fund. So it's very common.
For example, on the High Plains Metropolitan that borrowed similar to us around at the same time, then why is their premium so much less?
Oh, yeah. So, it's a great question, and it's, it actually ties back into a comment you'd made previously about, you know, did we get this premium because we're so great? Not dismissing how great everyone in the room is. But two of the factors, premium is driven by the difference between the coupon column and the yield column. So there's a variety of reasons, and we stated previously that the coupon column is largely dictated by market convention. People have wanted 5% coupons for a very long time. So as interest rates are higher, and that the difference between the coupon and the yield shrinks, you'll get less premium. And that can happen for two reasons. One, you can be in overall higher interest rate environment. And the entities that borrowed in January were in an overall higher interest rate environment, and because of that, irrespective of their credit quality, they received lower premium. The other reason for that is they could be of a lower credit quality themselves. And when those entities are a lower credit quality themselves, they borrow at a higher interest rate, moving their yield closer to their coupon. High Plains Metropolitan District is a small metropolitan district of a lower credit rating. One of the reasons you generate as much premium as you did is because the market was so favorably attracted to the credit rating and the Englewood story, generally speaking.
See, we really are good.
I didn't want anyone to think I do anything special.
We were right all along.
No, that we were good, I mean, no, I don't, I understand the way that that works and that is part of our credit rating and everything, but it doesn't change the fact that we end up having to pay it back. And that was the concern from the beginning, was that we still have to pay that premium back. It's not free money. But that we garnered more, I understand. We just garnered more that we have to pay back, too. But I just wondered why, particularly on that particular day, and so I understand that they may not have the same kind of rating, and that's why it didn't generate.
It's a great question, and it's actually a very useful comparison there. I mean, the other way of looking at it, if you were on the, a representative of High Plains who said, our credit quality cost us $5 million in project proceeds compared to what Englewood did on the same financing.
Except for also, they don't have to pay it back either.
No, they absolutely do.
They absolutely do.
Well, oh, well, no.
Their repayment would be the same.
Because they're at a higher interest rate, yeah.
Their repayment would be the same to yours.
Their coupon could have been different.
Yeah, right.
Let's move on to the next one, yeah. Okay. So, so these are just drilling down a little bit more onto comparable transactions. You can see the city's transaction on the left and some...
No, we can't see that.
Oh, sorry. Maybe not. Is there a zoom, maybe? But anyway.
We've got copies in our package.
I can summarize. So you can see, maybe, that there's, the first column is the maturity year, the second is the principal amount, the third is the coupon, the fourth is the re-offering yield, which is the yield that investors pay, or the investor, you know, sort of the yield you're borrowing at, given how much they're willing to pay you. And then the last column is the re-offering yield spread. And this gets to Josh's point about how much value do investors give your particular credit? The spread is to an index, which is a AAA rated index, which is the highest rating. And so pricing on different days, the market can be moving around, but we usually measure how strongly a transaction priced by how close to that index you were. And the index, you know, moves day to day. But you can, in some of the early maturities, you know, you're two, four, five basis points, so that's .05 percentage points above the AAA index. So that's very strong pricing compared to some of these other, you know, school districts or other general obligation bond issuers who have, you know, maybe lower ratings and had wider spreads. Arapahoe, you can see from 18 basis points all the way out to, you know, 73 basis points. So the, you know, the tighter that spread is to the AAA index, the lower your yield is and the more premium you're going to get, which, as Josh mentioned, is a positive story for the city, given the strong credit. And we can, if there's any of these that are of particular interest, we can drill down, but just a few more pages, and this is kind of a lead behind as well, for your reference. So that's all the materials we had here. If there's any questions on any of the slides or other concepts, we'd be happy to field those.
Thank you. What type of direction or discussion are you looking for here, Mr. Keg? Is this informational, or are you looking for a direction here?
Yeah, this is more of information, Mayor. However, we do want to enunciate one thing, and again, it's been brought up this evening, several questions about the mechanics of how the bonds were sold. If the council recalls, you did approve a par, an ordinance, parameters ordinance that talked about the par as well as premium. There was consensus to move forward with that consensus vote, and that's why we moved forward in the way in which we did, knowing that the market, again, because of the low interest rates, there would be that demand market and preference for the 5% premium that we've been able to generate, and again, according to the AA bond rating that we have. At this point in time, we wanted to have just a general discussion, not get into the weeds with the type of projects, because we don't want to, we're not ready to bring anything forward, obviously, this evening. One thing that we will say is this, we would like the ability to use premium for elements that are contained within our capital projects budget today or some other need within that callable years, period of time, for items that may have a useful life of 20 years. You may ask what that might be. An example would be, we currently have a records management system at the police department that's failed. Police Chief John Collins has been in discussion with the E-911 authority to move to a common platform for RMS, and he actually, single-handedly, I'm proud of the man, he is convinced them that that's something that they should do to help bring the price down. But we're still looking at quite a sizable expense for a new records management system that would go along with the new CAD, the Tri-Tech CAD system that the E-911 system and all the communities are joining. So that's about a, right now, it's a delta or a bogey of about $750,000. We think that number will come down. We also have a SWAT vehicle that's over 30 years that needs to be replaced, and that in and of itself could be quite expensive. You know, they make it now, so it could sustain, you know, a full metal jacket round of a 7.62 millimeter round, or even better. And those are expensive equipment. Similarly, we have SWAT equipment that our SWAT team has that needs to be replaced, and that's another example of an expense that we bring forward that is currently in our capital projects budget, that we wouldn't need to pull money out of the general fund balance or reserve to pay for today. You have premium that you could utilize to do that. And what that does, it would be enable then the council to make decisions to utilize those funds in the reserve for other capital projects. We've been discussing this all this past year about the capital project needs that we have, and those are some. Lastly, we do anticipate that we would like to make some critical updates to the Fox Building, which is on Fox Street across from the police facility. That's still going to be utilized. And rather than pay storage cost for rent, either to ourselves at the Service Center Fund or to some external storage area, we'd like to be able to make the unnecessary security improvements and facility improvements in the Fox Building to keep that material here. As you'll hear later tonight, or as you recall, heretofore, we're going to build a parking garage that had storage within the garage itself, and because of the construction costs were higher, we had to scrap that particular plan. And so the Fox Building is going to play a bigger role for us with storage now than ever before. So this evening, council, again, we're just trying to seek the, some sort of consensus that we would be able to expend premium with contracts that we would bring back again at some future date to this particular council for approval for these items. Currently, these are, these are things that are just on our capital list, that we know that could be eligible for this particular expenditure and use of these funds, that, again, have been authorized by the voter, as well as your vote, to move forward with this particular bond sale through the parameters ordinance.
Thank you. You know, I'll turn it back over to council here for some feedback for staff. I'd like to try to keep this conversation as, as sort of macro as possible and kind of high level, and, you know, try to give some parameters for city staff to bring back projects to the next council on whether or not that would be appropriate. I think probably the direction here is, you know, should we twiddle our thumbs? Shall we look for these and start to line these up for a future discussion? And so I'd like to, you know, just kind of frame it up a little bit that way, and Councilmember Berentan.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to...
I was just going to say that. I appreciate you guys being here, but I'm not sure that they're here to tell us how to spend the money.
You know, I'm hoping that this discussion's going to last, you know, about 10 minutes, and, you know, I'm hopeful that if any questions come up, we would get the benefit of our guests staying. So if you don't mind, maybe just sticking around for a minute, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Berentan.
So have we moved on to the issue that we're talking about, or are we still talking about the bond? Because I don't think they have anything to do with how we spend this money.
Agreed, but they are the subject matter experts that may be eligible as a reference. Please continue.
I think that this should have been discussed as part of the budget piece of it. This money has been already included, and it was already an issue of concern, and one of the reasons that I voted against the budget, because this money was already put in the capital projects and mired in there with already a $2 million shortage of the capital improvement. So I think we have to have a really, a much more in-depth conversation before we go ahead and commit $5 million, that the city was in a good position. I appreciate that. I appreciate the additional information. But it was another question on what the premium was going, just an acknowledgement that this is now $32 million that we're paying back regardless. It's amazing that we were able to get it, but it's $32 million now that we're paying back, and that it needs to be in the constraints of the bond if we do spend any of it, or whether we should spend any of it. And that should have been, we need to have that as part of this budget discussion. So I think we need to have a little bit more conversation before we go ahead and start committing, that we're going to go ahead and supplement, because money is fungible. If we supplement it, if we take $5 million from this and do it on police expenditures that would otherwise come out of that capital improvements fund, then really what we're doing is freeing up $5 million from there to spend on something else. So the guise that somehow we're not actually using this money on things that aren't, there is a discussion we need to have as well. So I would prefer to have a little bit more information than try to make it appear as if this council is trying to do anything that would in any way even intimate binding of future council on this, so.
I think what I'm hearing is a suggestion perhaps, then, rather than having staff bring forward specific projects or proposals, you would like to set aside some additional time with the new council to have a little bit more of what I'm describing as this macro level conversation with the new council. Is that a fair restatement?
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I'm all for this. I think, I really appreciate the hard work that you all have done, including the city manager, in trying to get the most, the best and highest amount from the money that we had and that the voters approved. I think it's tremendous how much more we've gotten. And I can't imagine anyone not wanting us to actually make the best use of this money and try and get things done that allow us to do something even better in the next year with the $5 million. So I'm all for this, and I don't see any reason why we need to delay.
Thank you. Mayor Perton.
I'm going to echo Councilmember Olson's comments. Just going back to the vote of the people, this, we're doing what they asked. We're doing what we said we would do. Our payment is not higher than we told them it would be. I think we need to get on this, and there's no reason to kick this down the road. We need to get going on this, so our city and staff can start planning on how to move this forward. The voters have already said yes. They said yes to the yield, they said yes to the annual payment, and let's just get moving on this, so they can, staff can do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez.
I would like to see us go forward with this as well. I think there are a lot of things that we could use the extra funds for in support of our police staff and our team, so I think they deserve every tool that we can provide them to be successful, so I would like to see us go forward with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
I'd like to say I think it'd be in our best interest as a city to go ahead and move forward with this. When it comes to the specific projects, obviously, that will be for the next council or several councils down the road to make those decisions. We're paying back the same sum as we were to begin with, so I don't understand what the confusion is. And then the other part of it is, we do have requirements of what that can be spent on. You know, we have to follow the terms of the bond. So it isn't like we're buying who knows what, but it has to fit within the guidelines of the bond. So I don't see a problem with that.
You, Councilmember Russell.
Probably my comments aren't going to make any difference, but the truth is, I believe the majority of the community expected that this council would be wise with that money. So we're not really talking about what we're spending the money on right now. The future council can say, no, we're not going to spend that money. I do have the problem also that if we take this $5 million, which has already been put in the budget this year, not put in the 2018 budget, that money is already being spent. And that is incredibly frustrating for me. So I think that we should wait.
Thank you. I am going to suggest we do have consensus to move this forward, you know, and again, just to be clear for the public and everyone around, I think all we're doing here is directing the city manager to come forward with recommendations on particular projects that a future council can make those decisions on. But at least we know that we've given the authority to the city manager's office to expend some level of resources and time and effort to try to bring those projects forward for the next council's consideration. Any final comments? Councilmember Martinez?
I have one question for our guests. With the, if the interest rates go down, is there any cap on the number of times we could refinance? Like, is it a one-time deal, or is it, could we do it as often as we need, or what does that look like?
Yeah, that's a good question, and there's actually a couple of different types of refinancing. There's what's called a current refunding, which is when you would execute a refunding within 90 days of that call date, which is now 10 years in the future. And then there's an advance refunding, which would be more than 90 days out. Current tax law allows, federal tax law allows for only one advance refunding to be done. You can do as many current refundings as you like. The bill currently floating around, the new tax law may eliminate advance refundings entirely, but that's, you know, we don't know how that's going to play out yet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentan.
Generally, what's, what is the cost to refinance?
There, so there are similar fees, underwriting fees and consultant fees. On this transaction, it was about $200,000. Once you refinance, a lot of that principal will have matured. Some of the fees, particularly the underwriting fees, are as a percentage of the amount issued, so the fees at the time of refinancing may be lower, although in 10 years, it's hard to say.
Right. So obviously, as with any transaction like that, you would have to take into account to Councilmember Martinez's, I mean, we wouldn't want to just refinance all the time, because you'd be losing money, because you also have to pay quite a bit to refinance, too. I mean, you have to keep that into account on what the savings is and how long it would take to recoup those savings with the new interest rate. So that's just taken into consideration at the time, because it would be possible to continue to just refinance and refinance and never pay back.
And folks used to do that before the 1986 tax reforms. You could do as many advance refundings as you wanted, and that used to happen, and it was one of the reasons they limited it to only once.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for the clarification.
Well, thank you, everyone, for a wonderful discussion. I'd like to thank our guests for being here this evening. Appreciate all... Appreciate all of your expertise on these matters. I would like to move the council on to the next agenda item. My thought is perhaps we can get the presentation from Manager Weller and then the discussion perhaps could happen under Councilmember Choice after the conclusion of our regular meeting. But this is Agenda Item Two. This is our Broadway Improvement Update. Public Works Director Dave Henderson and Engineering Manager Paul Weller are present to update council on Broadway improvements. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. We'll try to keep this very brief, looking at the time. This information will only tonight and I'll let Paul present.
Good evening. The mid-block crosswalk is now open and fully operational. That includes the flashing beacons and the red carpet crosswalk marking. This, these photos are taken from October 28th, the day after the red carpet was completed. Schedule on the upcoming activities, we have the banners that have now been ordered. They're in production. They're about six weeks out and we'll have them installed by our traffic division. We went with Harmonic Media, who's an Englewood company, to prepare those for us. The electrical infrastructure construction, we anticipate bringing a contract to the city council first part of January for a February, March construction time, about a 60-day period there. We had a challenge with that part of the project in that we only had one contractor bid the project and their bid was considerably over what the overall budget could afford. So we've worked with them and the, our engineering designer. And we think we've come up with a plan to fit the budget by eliminating work in the 3,300 block and then some value engineering items that the contractor has come up with. So I think we're going to be about $200,000 for the work in the 3,400 block and that will replace the electrical outlets and the wiring. Next up on the schedule, we've purchased two different types of lights. We have a Acorn style from Sternberg, which is on the left side of the screen. And the Hess America is what our original proposal was for. We'll be installing those in the 3,300 block by January 8th. And we'll leave them there for about two weeks for public comment. Let's see which one is, is preferred. And then we'll work with the building owners where those lights are going to be located to make sure that they're, don't mind having them out there. Wayfinding signs, staff has come up with a few different types of concept designs. We ask at this time that council consider these going forward and maybe give us a little bit more guidance on what is desired and where those want to go. That concludes my part of the presentation.
Excellent. Yeah, we do have time for some questions here. Mayor Pertone? Okay. Questions or comments? Councilmember Rosen.
I don't necessarily have a question yet, but I just want to thank you for putting this together in a way that the merchants can actually give feedback on this. These lights are just completely two different kinds. So to give them two weeks, to give, I really appreciate the work you did. Because I know we've been kind of haranguing you about this piece, so I appreciate it quite a bit.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone.
Thank you for the presentation. Greatly appreciated. The, the crosswalk, it made a huge difference, putting that down. I didn't think it would make that much, even from going down in, that was another place I saw it, but in Littleton too. And they have the, but they don't have it as bright like that. So I didn't think it would make that much of a difference, but it did. And people are really able to pay attention to that a lot more, even with the lights. It really makes up very much of a crosswalk and I think it really enhances the safety. So I'm glad it's a little brighter than what I've seen other municipalities do. It brings a lot more attention, especially with the, I mean, the speed going down. But still, with the four lanes like that, it was really impressive. So thank you.
Councilmember Yates.
Couple of, well, one question, one comment. When it comes to the 3,300 block, so you took the electrical upgrades from that block away. And then you mentioned there was some value added that they did in the 3,400 block. What kind of value-added items are we talking about?
We worked with the contractor and the engineer. We came up with a few things, like changing the size of the conduits that they were going to bore, which had a, had a pretty big impact.
Good.
And, and some ideas that the contractor had on how they were going to bore, to try to cut down on the amount of concrete that we're going to have to replace.
When it comes to the wayfinding, you guys have kind of planned that if it needs electrical, there'll be a spot for electrical. But I think the last time we had a discussion about wayfinding, I think we wanted to postpone the wayfinding towards the end of the project to let's get a, a good look at how everything's going to end up being. Because there is the concern of too much clutter. You know, with the mid-block crossing, that adds quite a bit, so.
Mayor, I can address that. And I, I think one of the, the key hallmarks of this particular area was to set the tone for other areas of Broadway. And we certainly heard very loudly and clearly that there were concerns from merchants as well as residents, even looking at Littleton's Main Street and how they did their signage, it's intrusive. It's in the way. We certainly don't want to have that. But we do want to make sure that we set a theme and a tone. And we believe that the wayfinding signage that's been presented tonight could be utilized throughout the community, including gateways. Those taller signs are more of the gateway in nature. And we figured we wanted to find that now to get your feedback to say, if we find the appropriate place and we need, need signage, this is what it could look like. And it's a signage family as opposed to just a wayfinding sign. It's, it's what could be implemented from Yale all the way down to Bellevue.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rosen.
I do have one question I forgot I was going to ask. And that is, when we're, and I meant to ask this a long time ago when we were talking about wayfinding. On these kind of wayfinding signs, who's our major population that we're trying to help wayfind? Is it the pedestrian or is it the cars? Because it seems to me like two different, in doing both, I think we have to decide which one is prime and which one's secondary. Because there's no way some of these can be read by a car driving by. Are we trying to get people to stop and, and invite them in? Or are we trying to direct people who are walking? And maybe there's two different kinds of signs. So that's my only.
There are. And, and you're, you're exactly right, Councilwoman. The fact of the matter is, there are two different audiences trying to reach. As you can see, there are signs that indicate where parking is. And then there are certainly signage as well for pedestrians to know that if you go to the west, you're going to go to the Civic Center and RTD Light Rail or Malle Center or whatever we were looking at in that particular area. So we are really trying to hit two different audiences with that signage. And that's why it's a whole package as opposed to one sign that's, covers everything.
Yeah, there's five on each, well, four on one and five on the other, each with a different audience. And I think that's where we need to probably give feedback. Okay, for, for pedestrian, that works. This one doesn't work.
Yeah. No, and that's exactly something we can look at moving forward. And you, you hit the nail on the head.
Thank you. Thank you. One final question maybe before we wrap up is the ability for accessory lighting as we're putting the electrical. These, just want to be clear, I guess, that these will support accessory lightings. You know, whether they be across the Paseo or across Broadway or whatever we want to do. Is that a fair statement?
Essentially, we have a, a extra circuit in there for whatever we, we want to use it for, be it wayfinding or accessory lighting. Any lighting in the, in the Paseos can be done from the Paseos and, and should be relatively easily to accomplish with what we've got.
So it's basically a yes, right?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn and pick up a few minutes next door. Thank you so much.